The call of the white police on the road.
Councilman Perkins Dusty.
Aye.
Councilwoman Questa. Councilwoman Roman. Councilwoman Torres. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilwoman Keenan. Councilwoman Sdenham.
Here.
Councilwoman Massa.
Aye.
President Ball.
The president has been elected to the presidency. I have decided to go all steam. I have prayed for the ladies and ladies to play by counsel. Uh, Gonzalez.
Almighty God, as we legislate for our community, we have strong sense of justice and fair play in our view of the way we do. Above all, may we seek out your holy will. Give us the strength to follow it regardless of all human considerations.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which has spanned our nation from God and in this whole with the greatest faith in our heart.
This is a rare meeting of the same council as coordinated and being noticed from 2013 with the founding city boys all from the Boston local boy on December 27th, 2012. And sent to the Scottland only strictly to comply with the bridge of public health of the old New Jersey. At this time, I have come to speak in residence, taxpayer, like to come forward. Pressing council, you did that. Please come to that board to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Once again, and the resident taxpayer, my pressing council, in any manner, please step forward and state your name and address for the record to apply this. Also have a pretty big decision on the question. So if anyone want to come, pressing council, on any matter, please step forward.
Mr. Councilor President, would you like to speak?
Yes, my wife. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Just leave your name and address for the record.
Certainly, my wife, so I was on the present page, we do this on the coverage years, I think it's located in the north of the world, I think so. Um, I have here two copies of the presentation about a very, very summary of the structure and everything that are right. Excuse me.
You want to share this? My, uh, the best table. Sorry. You, 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 you present and talk to your share.
So, so, I said, can I ask before you give these two copies to the council? Okay, your life, your personal, that's what we need, I don't want to stay too long. I asked you to have a letter with three reports that had to be on our, that is, or some sort of form regarding the two contract. Recently included some responsibility letter for the area for vacuuming, so it's all right.
Yes, my wife, my wife, thank you, sir. You want to give this to the city council now?
Please.
You back this basically. And this is for the.
Thank you.
It's been there. I'm going to support my colleague, the court, the court of here, uh, has this door in place, but down in North Hill. Uh, doing some special planning, that's it. To open the, open the, the channel a little wider and deeper, so we can launch hard on this, those were the supports of presentation. So I think at time, I mean, asking the cloud and how to make a presentation would have been, gave the bit to make sure that the public's aware of taking place in that area. So at this time.
Thank you very much, sir. Uh, just a similar action, side of fact, it was actually a property project that started for the last 14 years. The vaults need to go about 38 miles of federal channels and near Carter. We got a 52 facilitation efficient airship, transit, leading into the list of terms, uh, for Jersey County and also near the air. For that time, my job, which is about $1 million overall. We had constructed 16 contracts for this 21 miles, which, 20 contracts down.
The president, excuse me, is speaking to the microphone. Line into the microphone.
Oh, sorry, sorry, is that better, sir?
A little bit more.
Yeah, by the way, okay, okay, uh, sorry. New York, New Jersey, Department, you do the project. It's been under construction for about 14 years, speaking about 38 miles of federal navigation channels, Carter, facilitate, uh, efficient access by the township leading to the 3 main container facilities, or list for Jersey and New York and. It's been constructed 16 contracts so far, this 21 contract, which I'm here to speak to you about, it's a couple of them. The contract is down underway for the last contract, I haven't had any kind of really last operations associated with, uh, in the Marla Kill channel. This is the third contract is referred to as the best state day three contract, is where the channel, the contract, great next register, she started moving construction, Marge, or list the channel. But starting in the last couple of weeks, they started the Marla Kill 3 period, straight next to New York, and then it was directed to City of. Sure, this bracket is also in the hand, I think I can say. Um, because the New York pit channel, the material is primarily shaped, which you had the same period, like I said, it requires drilling and blasting to get to fracture products, which can be dredged up. And even when it's down, we're going to the channel, to the channel, that is. So, regular, started off, starting around the second week of July, starting in the last operation, which is scheduled to run through the remainder of this coming year, through the spring of next year. Within that contract, spread the fractures, the footprints, the, uh, contracts being beaten. We also have 15 work for cautionary factors, contractors that send out notices to all residents that have been in 15, inviting them to have a pre-inspection of their home for concern about vibrations from that last operation. It's been a very, very late, very, very serious with the last operations in the number of years, and those prior contracts I mentioned. Uh, the contract associated, you know, contractors were like, said January, uh, we have scheduled as a public committee session on July 3rd in the, uh, All Star Building at 153 Third Street. Sixth Street to Seventh Street, the public committee session, so anybody from the public is encouraged, because if they have concerns about this, or a lot, or not, currently that being represented is four or two, even prior contractors, as well as the contract, initial contract, due monitoring of the noise and vibration from that last operation. Uh, and then following that, this particular last one, sorry, this here.
Yes, Mr. President, uh, this is, um, this all takes place in the first ward, the first ward castle, maybe it's not here, because his daughter's graduating tonight. And he thought he should have been meeting with the first ward, because I know when we were down there, um, there were some concerns about the residents, about their house shaking and stuff like that. And the meeting on July 3rd, that's the eve before July 4th, which is a major holiday. So, I don't know, maybe I need to speak to the councilman, uh, Councilman Carlos Torres, who all this stuff, it really affects his ward.
Yeah.
And all fairness to him, yeah, the presentation probably should have been with, with him being made aware of the fact that the gentleman was coming, I don't know, I'm just.
Yeah, I, uh, for your information, Councilwoman, I spoke to the council, uh, he's well aware of this, uh, not fight, not fight. Last week, that's what he, he was spoken about last week, uh, and he was aware that he was going to be here tonight, but he said he couldn't be here, so he asked me to go ahead. Uh, and, um, and I didn't, I, I didn't ask him a question, I don't, I think he felt that when he do the presentation on the, um, the third, or whatever, I guess he felt that he would pass that on to the cause. I think in, in the statement, you meant, you meant you made, you notified every person in that area, but then, how many, how many, uh, feet radius for the?
1500 feet.
1500 foot radius, okay, okay.
I know that people had concerns about the rad and, you know, and things falling in our homes, because they said it, um, they talked about the last thing, so.
Right.
I'm just saying that the real person who truly needs to be here.
But can I just say, it's not like he was, was notified, we've been discussing with last.
No, I just noted graduate, graduate, what do you think, is that a social's graduation?
Well, you know, he and I were discussing.
Okay, anyway.
Thank you. Good, continue, don't share with me.
Okay, um, so, I mean, I'm very, very surprised, I didn't want to be out of the vibration, uh, 1500 foot battery is set very conservative distance, but people will be able to detect the vibration for the distance of that, because the vibration is kind of major. Buses, buses drive by on screen, airplanes flying over, or shut, so people will be able to detect the vibration for the distance of that. But it's within that distance where starting themselves, where brought in pre-inspections, or there's, unfortunately, churches, all residents that God gives notice of, and then in here, please request inspection. And please them all, if they're interested, our hotline number, like, 201-339-6470.
Okay, thank you, uh, I, I just say, when we, when I don't lose it all, I just, I don't want to ask, you might not think I'm asking any question at all, as soon as, if there's any questions, please, any questions? Okay, so, thank you, thank you, sorry.
Hi, good evening, gentlemen, my name is.
Good evening.
I'm from Jersey City, and I, just as a point about clarification and information, um, we had met with Congressman Torres. It was he who selected the date of July 3rd, to have, um, that's what we need. And, um, he was aware of the meeting tonight, because, um, I, I want people to talk to him about the meeting. So, just as, just to clarify, I mean, kind of, um, you know, my understanding about that. And I appreciate your concern, because the residents who come in have passing concerns and need to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else who would call in, like, uh, pressing council, in any matter, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Once again, and the resident taxpayer, like, pressing council, in any matter, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Same number. That's one, okay.
Good evening, I'm Gina Baddis, I'm a recent woman.
Say it again, again.
I'm Gina Baddis, I'm a recent woman, actually, I'm a lady, there's stories, there are a lot of hotels, um, I'm, I'm here concerned about Nordist, this Michael through, about tourism, and listed.
My tourism.
Yes, so that I got a certified letter, because I guess I was close to the hotel. I just want to make sure that whatever organizations have been formed, has nothing to do with construction and, like, affect my property, my residence.
Okay, you talk, tourism is important, right?
Yes.
Uh, I don't know, like, you know, I should, should have thanked you.
Okay.
Okay, I see. Should have thanked you, okay. Uh, anyone else, any resident taxpayer, like, pressing council, in any matter? Once again, any resident taxpayer, like, pressing council, in any matter, same number, this portion will have a public hearing, uh, and you notice, uh, public hearing, according to this number, 4387, canceled. Uh, so, uh, that ordinance will not be heard, uh, tonight already, so, uh. Uh, we're going to move on, public hearing, the right one is on the 4388, and then canceled, and scheduled for July 23rd, uh, 2013. Okay.
Ordinance number 4389. Authorize establishment of personalized handicap parking space for Alton Grace C and Milo 63 Florida Street.
You have a read on number 4389, anyone from the general public like to address point number 4389? Anyone from the public like to address point number 4389, same number, all proportionally.
Ordinance number 4390, authorize the establishment of personalized handicap parking space for Rashida, Dozier, Akai, 151 Fulton Street.
You have a read on point number 4390, anyone here address point number 4390, same number, all proportionally. The eleven year extension group initiative, this year 2014 budget of amount 325,500, I find dollars. Uh, would you consider my colleague? Oh, sorry, anyone here, uh, like to speak on the budget, this they have approved the budget. Same number, all proportionally. Would you consider my colleague, I was just spent with the beat of the petition and communication, and would the city office move on to voice on personally?
Ordinance number 4387, and ordinance created in Elizabeth Tourism Improvement District and designated Elizabeth Destination Bond and Organization as the District Executive Corporation as amendment.
You have a read on point number 4387, would you please?
Would you want to show off, Mr. President?
Move that second, come on, sir. Go, go.
Councilman Perkins Dusty.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sdenham.
Aye.
Councilman Massa.
Aye.
President Ball.
Aye. Since I support, thanks for speaking.
Ordinance number 4391, and ordinance authorizes the execution of the agreement of state element conveyance of the property located at 625 Laszlo Street, known as the Freedom Club Polish National, home to the city of Elizabeth, for the purchase price of $750,000.
You have a read on point number 4391, would you please?
Would you want to show off, Mr. President?
Move that second, come on, sir. Uh, I know these certain board councilmen is kind of, is for a few minutes, but I, I've actually seen that they're, I would put, quite true, the Polish home. I know the council for second would have some great place to, uh, come and, uh, up in that area, uh, and, and this time we'll be able to kind of just, just basically.
Thank you, Mr. President, I appreciate that, everybody's on my politics for that. So, Amy Young, the lady that was speaking is from resident of the second world, so I just wanted to talk to her about the tourism group of district, and be sure that it's not going to be a problem. Uh, yeah, Mr. President, the, uh, the acquisition of the Polish home, which is in the second board, is something that has been working out for some time now, and I'm happy to see that you are looking forward to that direction. And this is certainly something that is going to help to provide the youth in our city, so what I'm wishing for is additional recreational opportunities for the youth here in the city of Elizabeth, so that's why it's been very important to me, and it's been a long time coming, and I'm working on this, and really having this, 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 for, and, and, sir.
Thank you, Councilman, go, go.
Councilman Perkins Dusty.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sdenham.
Aye.
Councilman Massa.
Aye.
President Ball.
Aye, since I support, thanks for speaking.
Ordinance number 4392, amend chapter 17.52 of the Code of City of Elizabeth entitled Fee, specifically section 17.52.40, lists the property needs to be notified of public hearing to perform on state statute.
You have a read on point number 4392, would you please?
Would you want to show off, Mr. President?
Move that second, come on, sir. Go, go.
Councilman Perkins Dusty.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sdenham.
Aye.
Councilman Massa.
Aye.
President Ball.
Aye, since I support, thanks for speaking.
Ordinance number 4393, authorize the execution of a lease agreement between the city of Elizabeth and the Elizabeth New Jersey Court Salvation Army, a New Yorker corporation, for the use of city-owned property located at 1018 East Round Street, providing emergency shelter for homeless individuals for the period June 18, 2013, to June 18, 2014, and an annual fee of $1.
You have a read on point number 4393, would you please?
Would you want to show off, Mr. President?
Move that second, come on, sir. Go, go.
Councilman Perkins Dusty.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sdenham.
Aye.
Councilman Massa.
Aye.
President Ball.
Aye, since I support, thanks for speaking.
Ordinance number 4394, authorize adoption of the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection for damage prevention ordinance.
You have a read on point number 4394, would you please?
Would you want to show off, Mr. President?
Move that second, come on, sir. Go, go.
Councilman Perkins Dusty.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sdenham.
Aye.
Councilman Massa.
Aye.
President Ball.
Aye, since I support, thanks for speaking.
Ordinance number 4395, granting improvement permit to GBS Groundwater and Environmental Services, Neptune, New Jersey, performing environmental work consisting of one groundwater monitoring well within the public right of way on Denton Street, across from 654 South Broadway Street.
You have a read on point number 4395, would you please?
Would you want to show off, Mr. President?
Move that second, come on, sir. Go, go.
Councilman Perkins Dusty.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sdenham.
Aye.
Councilman Massa.
Aye.
President Ball.
Aye, since I support, thanks for speaking.
Ordinance number 4396, granting improvement permit to Klein Felder, Hamilton, New Jersey, to perform environmental work consisting of two temporary monitoring points within the public right of way, a 460 Elizabeth Avenue.
You have a read on point number 4396, would you please?
Would you want to show off, Mr. President?
Move that second, come on, sir. Go, go.
Councilman Perkins Dusty.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sdenham.
Aye.
Councilman Massa.
Aye.
President Ball.
Aye, thanks for the best of, thanks for speaking.
Ordinance number 4397, granting improvement permit to Tyree Environmental Corporation, Mount Laurel, New Jersey, performing environmental work consisting of one groundwater monitoring well within the public right of way along East Jersey Street, in the south of West Windfield, Scott Plaza.
You have a read on point number 4397, would you please?
Would you want to show off, Mr. President?
Move that second, come on, sir. Go, go.
Councilman Perkins Dusty.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sdenham.
Aye.
Councilman Massa.
Aye.
President Ball.
Aye, since I support, thanks for speaking. Public hearing for the, for the restoration of the four more which shall take place at city council meeting, we have held Tuesday, July 23rd, 2015, at 7:00 PM. Orders are part of this.
Ordinance number 4388, amend chapter 13.16.130B2, chapter 13.16.130B3A, chapter 13.16.130B3B, and ancient code of the city of Elizabeth, entitled Super Service System, specifically to increase service rates in all mental life.
I give a motion to have this table.
I make a motion, this president can't, second.
Motion by the council, it's always same. Second by, second by, Councilor Sdenham, go, go.
Councilman Perkins Dusty.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sdenham.
Aye.
Councilman Massa.
Aye.
President Ball.
Aye, since I support, the orders table.
Ordinance number 4389, authorize the establishment of personalized handicap parking space for Rashida, Dozier, Akai, 151 Fulton Street.
You have a read on point number 4390, would you please?
Would you want to show off, Mr. President?
Move that second, come on, sir. Go, go.
Councilman Perkins Dusty.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sdenham.
Aye.
Councilman Massa.
Aye.
President Ball.
Aye, since I support, thanks for speaking.
Ordinance number 4390, authorize the establishment of personalized handicap parking space for Rashida, Dozier, Akai, 151 Fulton Street.
You have a read on point number 4390, would you please?
Would you want to show off, Mr. President?
Move that second, come on, sir. Go, go.
Councilman Perkins Dusty.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sdenham.
Aye.
Councilman Massa.
Aye.
President Ball.
Aye, since I support, thanks for speaking. Do this, before we do this, I'd like to ask special, of news, costly heaven, find a destination, have a partnership.
I support, Mr. President.
Move by, Councilman, Councilman, vice, President Dusty, second by, Councilman Keenan, go, go.
Councilman Perkins Dusty.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sdenham.
Aye.
Councilman Massa.
Aye.
President Ball.
Aye.
Random date of June 24, 2013, from the Elizabeth Avenue Partnership Special Improvement District, requesting permission to conduct district-wide sideboard sales to be held, July 25 through 27, random August 1st through 3rd, August 15 through 17, with a random date, August 22nd through 24, August 29th through the 31st, with a random date of September 5th through 7, September 26th through the 28th, with a random date, October 3rd through 5th, 2013.
You have a read on point number, would you please?
Would you want to show off, Mr. President?
Uh, move that second, come on, sir. Go, go.
Councilman Perkins Dusty.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sdenham.
Aye.
Councilman Massa.
Aye.
President Ball.
Aye, thanks for speaking.
Add-on of fiscal year 2014, Elizabeth Avenue Special Improvement District budget in the amount of $323,595. Authorize fiscal year 2013 municipal utility budget transfers in the amount of $255,500.
You have a read on the resolution, would you please?
Would you want to show off, Mr. President?
Move that second, any comments? Go, go.
Councilman Perkins Dusty.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sdenham.
Aye.
Councilman Massa.
Aye.
President Ball.
Aye, thanks for speaking.
Authorizing cancellation of $1 million of the survey to be operated by unexpected balance of capital outlay litigation and credit for super utility surplus. In compliance with State Statutory 2013 Appropriations Act, city council is requested to approve all payments related to accumulated uncompensated absence benefits. Authorizing order respective contracts from Jersey Sustainable Energy Joint Meeting for the purchase of electricity to Constellation New Energy, New York, NRT Energy, Princeton, New Jersey. Authorizing order contract for wireless communications and electronics, West Berlin, New Jersey, for the purchase of three Panasonic Tuck Hold computers with fire department at a total cost of $18,724.8 cents. Authorizing order contract to Public Service Electric and Gas Company, Somerset, New Jersey, for the purchase of 37 25-foot dago poles with attachments for the Midtown infrastructure improvement combined with the global bed and running, in the amount of $345,297.58. Authorizing offer city officials to execute all necessary documents for the local government, passing grant issued by the Northern Jersey Sustainable Communities Consortium, and to get the North Jersey in the amount not to exceed $110,000.
You have a read on the resolution, would you please?
Would the resolutions go, go, Mr. President?
Move that second, come on, sir. Go, go.
Councilman Perkins Dusty.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sdenham.
Aye.
Councilman Massa.
Aye.
President Ball.
Aye, since I support, thanks for speaking.
In compliance with the Sustainable Jersey Silver Certification Noble, authorize aggregation of Green Team Advisory Committee, which will also serve as an energy advisory support to improve municipal operations with green initiatives. In compliance with. In compliance with the Sustainable Jersey Silver, Silver Certification for New Companion Animal Management Pledge. In compliance with the Sustainable Jersey Silver Certification, Renew the Sustainable Land Use Pledge. In compliance with the Sustainable Jersey Silver Certification, Renew the Support of the Jersey Wildlife Action Plan Pledge. Authorizing city treasurer to cancel certain operating checks in the total amount of twenty-three thousand sixty-five dollars fifty-six cents. Workers' compensation in general, all the checks in the total amount of fifteen thousand four hundred seventy-two dollars seventy-four cents. Tax refund checks in the total amount of one hundred twenty-four thousand three hundred thirty-seven dollars ninety-one cents. Trust checks in the total amount of one thousand five hundred ninety-two dollars twenty-six cents, issued by the state, which remain outstanding and unclaimed, and send some to be credited to miscellaneous revenue not anticipated and further authorized issuance of replacement checks paid in the same amount into charged amount to the continuing account. Grant permission to entry to an agreement with Kenyon University to conduct a gift appreciation dinner recognizing their hard work and accomplishments during two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen school year. Authorize proper city officials to execute all necessary documents to provide a rental housing program for a living loan to Melon Melon Properties, Elizabeth, for the construction of four assistant units in a twelve unit project. On the property, they'll give you a two thirty-three Florida Street in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars in accordance with home rules and regulations.
You have the resolution, would you please?
Would you want to answer my call, Mr. President?
Move that second, come on, sir. Go, go.
Councilwoman Perkins, Dusty?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilman Sedaniel?
Aye.
Councilman Mazza?
Aye.
President Ball?
Aye, since I was, would you please, please?
Authorizing proper city officials to submit to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development consolidating plan under C D thirty-nine, this year two thousand thirteen, for community development programs, emergency solution grants, and home program funds. Authorizing proper city officials to amend the contract between the city and the Elizabeth Development Company, granting funds to the retail skills centers specifically to extend the term of the contract to December thirty, two thousand thirteen. Authorizing proper city officials to amend the contract between the city and Tri-Captain American Red Cross specifically to extend the term of the contract to December thirty, two thousand thirteen. Authorizing water contract to our consultants. Cranford, New Jersey, for former redevelopment study of the University Boulevard corridor for the period June twenty-six, two thousand thirteen, to June twenty-fifth, two thousand fourteen, in the amount not exceeding twenty-six thousand three hundred dollars, unless further authorized, number provided. Authorizing water contract to T and M Associates, Middletown, New Jersey, to provide environmental engineering consulting services at the former Saxon Hotel property located at twenty thirty, three thirty-eight, South Platoon Street, at a cost not exceeding sixty thousand three hundred dollars plus reversal. Authorizing water contract to T and M Associates, Middletown, New Jersey, to provide civil engineering services on a time and material basis in connection with track design and construction inspection at the intersections of Elizabeth Avenue and Ridge Street and Elizabeth Avenue and Jefferson Avenue. Cost not exceeding one hundred fifty-three thousand nine hundred dollars plus reversal. Paying utility bills, paying all the taxes.
You have the resolution, would you please?
Would you want to answer my call, Mr. President?
Move that second, come on, sir. Go, go.
Councilwoman Perkins, Dusty?
Aye.